Hi, everybody. Good afternoon, Orange Coast. Hello. Thank you so much for joining us today for this important conversation. I am Assemblywoman Cottie Petrie-Norris, and I represent California's 74th Assembly District, which is right here, Coastal Orange County. I am a mom. I'm an Assemblywoman. I'm also part of the Assembly's new gun violence prevention working group. So, like everyone in this room, I believe that addressing the threat of gun violence across the country and here in California, and ensuring that we have got common sense gun safety laws is a top priority. I want to just quickly introduce our panel today, and then I'll let you guys, you know, do a proper introduction. So, I'd first like to welcome Dr. Syed Nakvi. And --
Yes, absolutely.
Dr. Nakvi actually reached out to me a couple months ago, shortly after I was sworn in, and said, "I am really passionate about this issue, and I'd love to help move this conversation forward across the district." And so, Dr. Nakvi's been working really closely with my team to bring together the folks on this panel and to put together this event. So, thank you. Next, we have from the Brady Campaign Roger and Leslie Severs. Thank you for being here. From March For Our Lives, Mahmoud Al Farah and Anna Zing. From Moms Demand Action, Carol Hacker and Elena Anderson. And a retired lieutenant from the Costa Mesa Police Department, Lieutenant Clay Epperson. So, before we jump into our conversation, let me just take, you know, if you guys can just take a minute to introduce yourself, the work that you do, your experience, and, you know, the organization that you're here representing.
I'm called Syed Nakvi, and I'm a family doc. People like me are considered the healers, so we try to remain apolitical at our best. I'm here because I believe strongly that the anomaly of this problem makes it or should be diagnosed and treated as a public health issue. I'm trying to remember the simple numbers. I believe 13 times the rate of gun violence victims in our nation are higher than the Western world otherwise. Fifteen to 20 times the gun violence rate takes lives in our nation of adults as compared to other developed countries. So, somebody said something about a hair salon. So, our hair salons are not safe, our hospitals are not safe, our schools are not safe, our places of worship are not safe. So, I'm here to do my civic duty, I would say, in my personal and professional capacity, and hopefully, we can bring about a change to end this madness, if I may call it. Thank you.
My name is Leslie Severs, and I'm with the Brady Campaign, who has just, after 25 years, rebranded into the Brady Brady, United Against Gun Violence. So, I have to get used to this new name. We've been actively involved in the Brady Group for a number of years. I think what brought me to the table was Sandy Hook. As a mom and a grandmother, I couldn't imagine six-year-old children slaughtered in their classroom. So, that's why I'm here.
Hi, I'm Roger Severs. Leslie and I have been in this together. The first political contribution we ever made was to Brady, and that was over 25 years ago. And unfortunately, the need is greater today than it was then. I happen to be on the Finance Commission over at the city of Irvine, and we have to go through active shooter training. That's a new experience to me. And at a Christmas dinner, we're talking to the children of a principal at a school up in Santa Clarita. They were talking about their active shooter training going on in their school. And my goal back in the early '90s, when we first started getting involved in this, was that children should be able to be safe going to school. That was my objective. And if anything, we've gone backwards, and we've got a lot of work to do. So, that's why we're here.
Hi, I'm Anna Zing. I'm the Regional Logistics Coordinator for Orange County. I'm a freshman in college, and I got involved last year organizing the walkout at my high school after the Parkland shooting. And I think, like a lot of my student activists, fellow student activists, we got involved because we were scared, and we saw a need to stand up and fight for our lives if no one else was going to do it. So, it's been a year, and we've done a lot, and I'm hoping we can do more, especially legislatively.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mahmoud Samer Al Farah. I am the Director of March For Our Lives, California. The reason why I got involved a lot with March For Our Lives, California, mainly was seeing how, after the tragic shooting that happened in Parkland, Florida, students around my age going out and getting involved. That really inspired me not just to get involved, but to kind of step up in a sense in my community to see what we can do to really improve ourselves. And in terms of gun violence and pushing for gun safety reform, looking at the politicians around us and seeing that they really aren't putting our best interests at hand, really also got me inspired to get more involved. And further on, we will be discussing more about it. And thank you to Orange Coast, I believe the district, for hosting this, as well as Cottie. And yeah, I'm excited. So, thank you.
My name is Elena Anderson, and I'm the Orange County Lead for Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. And I became active in Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America the day that we started here in Orange County with the very first Orange County event six years ago. This is an organization that grew out of the Newtown shootings. My daughter was less than two years old at the time, and it was a response to that that a woman started a Facebook page, and then it turned into this national movement that's recognized from, probably worldwide, but from the president on down, the earlier one as well. So, yeah. So, I have been active in the group because I was a high school teacher, and my teaching career started when Columbine happened. So, I've always had a lesson plan and an escape plan. Then I became a mom, and I live in Seal Beach, just down the street, about less than a mile from the salon where the biggest Orange County mass murder ever happened. And the person was caught on my walk to the park, and the salon is on my walk to the park with my then-one-year-old. So, I just couldn't sit after Sandy Hook happened and do nothing. So, for six years, I've been in this fight, and it has been amazing. Thank you for being here and for hosting this, because I have not been well-received by our previous congresspeople, and then they just stopped meeting with us. So, this is just, it's been such a pleasure to have politicians who care now and are helping us move gun violence prevention forward.
Hi, I'm Carol Hacker, and I'm also with Moms Demand Action. I became involved about two and a half years ago. I'm the Legislative Lead. We work for laws in California. We have good gun laws. There are loopholes, there are things to fix. And we also work on the federal level, and part of that is electing a gun sense majority in the House of Representatives, which has never happened before this year. So, again, I am a mom. I have a nine and 11-year-old who go to public school every day. But I think something that's stuck in my mind, and I know Elena's too, the last few weeks, are the suicides of two Parkland students who survived that shooting, and the suicide of one of the fathers of a Sandy Hook six-year-old who was murdered. And what that tells me is, you know, this grief, this pain, does not go away. It is not, you know, "Oh, it's over," and people talk about something else. This shatters families irrevocably. It is horrific, and that's why I do this work. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Clay Epperson. I'm a retired police lieutenant from this city, Costa Mesa. I live in this city. I'm raising my family here. My children go to the schools. And as a police officer, I worked street gangs, major narcotics, street narcotics, career criminal. I was on SWAT team for eight years. I'm quite familiar with weapons and what they're capable of. I am a gun owner, but I dropped out of the NRA in the 1980s when I saw they had no interest in doing useful gun policy. And I'm convinced this is one of those topics where I think great good can be achieved, but we could impose policies that would create far more problems than it will resolve. And we've kind of been shifting that way a little bit, and it's worrisome to me, but I think there's still room to move back and make good policy on this.
Thank you. Leslie, in your introduction, you mentioned Sandy Hook. So, I, as some of you know, I spent eight years living in London with my family. And during those years, eight years, there was not a single mass shooting in the country that I lived in, not a one. And I moved back to America right before that Sandy Hook shooting with my three-year-old and my five-year-old. And I, like you, just remember just the horror and, you know, the feeling of sending your kids to school and them not coming home. And I remember us all saying then, you know, "Enough is enough, never again." But that was seven years ago. And in the intervening seven years, we've seen way too many of these tragedies, way too many lives that have been lost. And I guess the first question I want to start with is pretty open-ended, and that's why. Why does this keep happening in America in a way that it doesn't happen anywhere else in the world?
This is a country that's founded on a gun culture. I mean, it's a basic civil rights, and that's part of it, that we have a long history, you know, of gun ownership and a man protecting his family and taking care of his property. And for the longest time, we had little entities, enclaves of people, that had no real law enforcement. Government wasn't really there. And so, it's embedded in our culture like no other country that I can find. I mean, we're not like the UK, we're not like New Zealand, we're not like Australia. And so, we have a very different problem, and we have the Second Amendment, which many people in this country view as an extremely important civil right that should not be messed with. And so, that's defining part of the problem right there.
Yeah, I think to add on to that, and why it's such a big issue in the United States, we make up about a little under 5% of the world population, but we own about 40%, 45% of the world in firearms. And if you look at the math and the statistics behind it, the correlation between gun violence and gun ownership is positive, meaning if you have more guns in the system, more gun violence is going to occur. And we can give excuses about how we have the Second Amendment. However, the Second Amendment does say a well-regulated state militia. So, there are rooms for improvement to making sure that we create policy that can counteract gun violence.
I think another thing that happens, though, is that people become militant in their position and don't stop to listen. Just the other day, I had a conversation with a close friend who's known I've done this work for six years. And she doesn't, she didn't understand until I explained it, that everything she was telling me she believed was the Moms Demand Action platform. We support the Second Amendment. We have gun owners in our group. We want guns to be kept out of the hands of the wrong people, and right now, we're supporting a background check that's gone through Congress at H.R. 8 and is going into the Senate. But that doesn't take guns away from the good guys. If you can pass a background check, then you can have your gun. That's okay. We believe in protecting children and communities from guns by having a program where we teach about responsible gun ownership and having your gun locked away and unloaded and locked away from the ammunition, which should also be locked. And it's not just Sandy Hook and Parkland and all of the other mass shootings at the salon, the movie theater, the synagogue, the church, the, and so on, the mosque. It's also the everyday gun violence. Those three suicides that Carol mentioned are intertwined with these mass gun shootings, gun murders. But 100 people in the United States of America die every day from gun violence. When I started this six years ago, it was 86 people a day. So, I think that if people can come to understand that, for instance, Moms Demand Action supports you still owning your gun and using it responsibly, but also supports taking care of people who could perhaps be a danger to themselves or others, then we can have maybe a change in the culture, of the gun culture in this country, because you don't have to be, "Get rid of all of the guns." That's impossible, and not, it's not realistic or even necessary. And you don't have to be, "Oh, my gosh, we have to have all the guns that we can have so that we can do," I don't know what you're planning to do. But I think we just need to be able to talk.
Can I make a point that since 1993, we've had greater than a 50% reduction in homicides? Everybody here is saying how much worse things are. Let me tell you, I saw things get way better, even going into my retirement, from what it was. And that largely happened without any real significant changes in gun laws. There was societal pullback from violence, that there was a de-emphasis or deglorification of gang lifestyle. I think there was changing in police practices. Also, as a side note, there was mass incarceration. We put a lot of people in jail, and that prevented a lot of deaths. The gun violence and violence in general is not evenly distributed throughout this country. If you took out like the 10 worst cities for gun violence, our level of violence in this country approaches that of what we see in Europe, that it's highly concentrated in urban centers, where, for instance, they say the national rate is, what, 4.1 homicides per 100,000. There are cities, urban centers, that were at 70, 80, even 100. Chicago alone had more homicides in 2016 than all of the UK. I would venture to guess that the vast majority of the firearms used in those homicides were illegally possessed, illegally owned, and illegally utilized. And so, we really have a different problem that we have to deal with. Dealing with it as a public health issue, I think, is extremely important. Violence spreads the way viruses do. It fans out and connects exactly the way communicable disease does, and we need to look at that. Mental health, massive importance. And we could spend a lot of money, and we'd get a lot of other great benefits out of it if we did mental health, had better mental health treatment in our schools. The criminalization of weapon ownership, I think, has very little to offer in return for us. It'll create more criminals.
You talked about criminalization of, I don't even know where, I don't even know where your information's coming from, and we also don't have people around in violence to other countries if we ruled out the cities.
I think you misunderstood what I said. But our gun violence is concentrated in urban centers for the most part.
If we have a question to the audience, just move it in. Yes.
Lady, give him a microphone.
Okay. All right, if you've got questions, we can bring the microphone over.
Hi, my name is Bethany Webb, and my sister Laura was murdered in Seal Beach, which is not an urban center. She was murdered along with seven other people. My mom was shot and survived in the biggest mass shooting in Orange County, in the Orange County Mayberry, which is Seal Beach. So, when you're going to talk about the same numbers, yes, do we have more crime in urban areas than we do in non-urban areas? Yes. Does that mean that we are equal in the other states and the other places we live in to Europeans? No, we're not. We have more gun violence take away all the urban cities than all the rest of the countries have combined.
Okay. Okay, so, I grew up in Chicago, so I can kind of speak on that. In defense of Chicago, a good amount of the gun violence isn't from the gangs, it is largely from police. I grew up in Chicago, again, like it was, it's so, we, my brother and I grew up in the city, so we had this joke, "Did we just hear fireworks or gunshots?" And that was very, it's something that, it's Chicago culture, it's something that you know. But another thing you know is that the police are a lot more dangerous than the gangs a lot of the time. From my experience, police in these areas don't have proper training, and yes, gang violence is a really large part of it, but you can't talk about deaths in Chicago due to firearms without acknowledging the issue with the police and the police force there.
I have a question related to that, because I think there is, you know, there's a huge conversation all across the country, and definitely here in California, about the use of force. And one question I always have is, how much of that do you think has to do with the fact that if you're a police officer, you have a reasonable reason to think that, you know, the guy on the other side of the corner has a gun? And, you know, do you think that one reason --
Well, I would say that over the course of my career, that without a doubt, we started encountering more and more people that were more violent, more skilled with weapons, more skilled at fighting, more ready to take us on as time went on. However, we had to become more aggressive, more assertive, more safe. I think the facts would completely dispute what this young lady said. I think you're completely, you need to go back and look at the facts, because you're wrong. The number of murders by, or murders, homicides by police officers in Chicago comes nowhere near the amount of gang violence that's occurring in Chicago, not even close, not even, wouldn't even measure.
Okay, so --
But, no, we, it is unfortunate, the amount of force that police officers have to use. And one of the things that we've found here in this country that makes it so bad is, as a society, across the board, we've turned our back on mental health, mental illness. We let mentally ill people stay on the street 30 years at a whack. There's guys on the street that I could go find today that were there the day I started in 1980, and when they have a bad day, when they act out, when they grab some kind of weapon, they end up getting shot. And that happens every day around the country. It's unfortunate, but it's a result of things that have gone on in this --
Dr. Nakvi?
So, it's fascinating for me, and this is my first time in such a forum, that how much of a conversation, and we're all not on one page. I think, just to pivot a little bit, and going back to the Second Amendment, I have every right to treat my allergies, I have every right to treat my runny nose, but I cannot go in a pharmacy and buy Sudafed right now if I do not have a license. Somebody got over all this conversation that's happening here and solved this problem. There's a legislation that says you cannot buy Sudafed off the shelf. Why is that thing not there for guns? It's not.
We've had a lot of energy, and it's come out of Sandy Hook and violence, but just to build on the numbers for a second, there are the 100 people killed by gun violence daily. The folks, the mass shootings, there's about one a day, and there's about four people killed per day in mass shootings. You talk about domestic disputes, about 1% of the people killed by gun violence each day comes from domestic violence. Interestingly, 60% of the gun violence deaths each day are suicides. You talk about the people at Sandy Hook, you talk about the people at Parkland, and the people that you don't know about. These are the folks that are home, the dementia, all of the issues that go on, the guns that aren't properly stored, that aren't locked up, and two out of three deaths each day are suicides. And we don't talk about that. So, we really can't lose sight of that and how to deal with that risk.
They're bringing us back to that, because I think, you know, while we might debate, you know, how do we stack up compared to other countries, or how do you cross-cut the data, I think we can all agree that too many lives are lost every day, every week, every month, and every year because of guns in America. And so, a question I would like to ask, you know, and have everyone respond to, is, you know, if you could do just one thing, if you got one wish, you know, what is the one thing you would like to see happen at the national level that you think would make Americans safer?
I would like to see greater, more effective licensing of people who are going to possess firearms. And that licensing should be restricted to people who can properly maintain, possess, and use weapons, and that every firearm, if you were going to own a firearm, would have to be attached to your license. If you were going to buy a bullet, that it would have to be attached. So, if you went out and bought bullets, that would be associated with your license. So, if that bullet gets used in a homicide, they're going to come back, it's going to be traced back to you. We can mark shells, we can mark bullets, we can trace this. There's, I think there's policies we could do that will make this problem worse, and there's policies we can do that I think will make this problem better in the long run.
To go along with that, universal background checks, H.R. 8. It's not intrusive, it's not any more intrusive than trying to get a driver's license, that you are not mentally ill, that you are not a convicted domestic abuser. This is not hard. 90% of the United States wants it. It's common sense. Thanks.
I second that about universal background checks, because I don't think a lot of people know that there is no nationwide federal law that says what the rules are for buying a gun. And so, we have great laws here, there are great laws in Illinois, but next door, we both have states where you can just go buy a gun and your milk and everything else at the same store, and then go out and carry your gun and carry it into Starbucks, and that would be fine. So, if we could have that universal background checks and licensing for gun ownership and ammunition, that would, I think, make a huge difference.
I think for me, finding a better way to fund gun violence research. Right now, we have something we have in place, or we need to repeal the Dickey Amendment in general. For those of you who don't know what that is, the Dickey Amendment was put through by Congressman, I believe, J. Dickey, where basically, you completely stopped funding for the Center for Disease Control and Prevention and not used any of the material that goes through that. A lot of us like to talk about statistics and work with numbers and data, but there's no way to work with data and numbers if we can't even get the research through it. So, repealing the Dickey Amendment is definitely somewhere where we can start, where we can make sure that we can fight back against gun violence, and making sure that if you are going to own a gun, you have the right capabilities to do that.
So, obviously, I agree with everyone with background checks and resources and numbers, but also, I would like to add on protections for victims of domestic violence. I think we have, we're endorsing a bill, AB 61, that would allow you to grant a petition to the courts for a firearm restraining order as long as you've known this person for more than six months. And I think that if we can get this passed, then it would be a great way to protect victims of domestic violence and allow for people who are bystanders to do something to keep victims of domestic violence safe.
We can get emergency protective orders now. That's, you can call Justice of the Peace and get it immediately.
There was a bill passed in the House to protect gun violence against women. Our local congressional representative, Katie Porter, was quoted, she made the comment that when she called the police for protection, she was told by the officer, if she called again, that she would have her children taken away. This was on the, this was on the floor of the House of Congress today.
At the end of the line here, everybody's pretty much covered things. So, my point would be, consider the people you are electing to Congress carefully, and find out, find out what their positions are on this issue, and if we can vote in the right Congress, we can get some bills passed that will make a difference.
I am out of any answers, really.
Plus one on everything that was said. And you know what's interesting, some people alluded to this. Every thing that was mentioned here, every single thing is supported, you know, time and again, poll after poll, by the vast majority of Americans. So, it's a question of how do we ensure that our policies are reflecting the will of the vast majority of the people in a way that still, you know, does, I think, to be clear, I think everyone on this stage does respect the Second Amendment and, you know, wants to make sure that we develop common sense gun safety laws within that framework.
Okay, so, I wanted to refer back to your first question, Cottie, the one about the why. And I think what we're ignoring possibly, because I know you've touched on the social, the political reason why, the constitutional rights, but I think there's an economic factor of, for example, the gun lobby, the NRA, that has a lot vested in this industry. So, I think that's probably part of the reason. So I think that's probably part of the reason is having the economic factor.
Uh, yeah, that, that's a great point, and I think to add on to that, we need to make sure that we're electing, uh, officials who put the interests of our people over the interests of, uh, special interest groups. Uh, and I think the NRA has been doing a lot to counteract that.
And I think, I think that's true, you know, whether we're talking about this subject or we're talking about environmental issues, or we're talking about business issues, or whatever we're talking about, you know, I think we would all agree that we want to make sure that we like people who prioritize people over facts.
All right, I'd just like to make sure this is a fact-based discussion. So the young lady who made the comment about police being the, a more dangerous threat for gun violence in Chicago than the gangs, according to the 2017 F D I U Form Crime Report, which I'm looking at right here, the total number of felons killed, another pool of people killed by police officers in the entire country was 429. Last year, the gang, uh, body count was over 1,300 in the city of Chicago alone. Okay?
Okay. Uh, can I clarify on my point with that? Okay, so I'm sorry, I'm not the best at communicating, but what I meant is that when people talk about gun violence in Chicago, they often ignore the root of the issue. It's not just about the guns, or the people even, it's about the lack of resources, people are poor, they have nothing else, so it's, it's this resortment, it's just, um, I think that if you're going to talk about gun violence in Chicago, you can't just look at the people killed, but rather you also have to look at everything surrounding that, and, uh, the police, also, there is corruption, sorry.
Words mean something. The other comment that I want to correct, just so we have facts here. According to Section 10 of the U S Code, subsection 246, the militia of the United States' composition and classes, section A, the militia of the United States consists of all able-bodied males at least 17 years of age and, except as provided in section 313 of Title 32, under 45 years of age who are or have made a declaration of intention to become citizens of the United States, and of female citizens of the United States who are members of the National Guard. The two classes of the militia are the organized militia, which consists of the National Guard and the naval militia, never heard of naval militia, and the unorganized militia. All right? That's the legal definition of the militia of the United States.
You know, one of my goals in having these town halls and community meetings is to have an opportunity for people with different perspectives to come together in the same room and have a conversation. And I think, you know, the reality is, all too often, in this deeply polarized world that we're living in, that doesn't happen. And, you know, depending on what your Facebook feed says, and what, you know, news you're watching, you have a different, you know, version of, of what's happening in our world. And I think that, more than anything, I think, um, concerns me about the continuing division and polarity in that country. And I really do hope that, you know, as we continue this conversation, that, you know, whatever your position, you know, whatever your perspective, that we can try to explain to one another and get each other to, to see our perspective without, without it being angry and, um, you know, without it feeling like, like if I disagree with you on something, I'm, I'm not attacking you, I'm just disagreeing with you.
Thank you. I have a question for you. I have a question.
Okay.
Everyone keeps talking about making more policies and more stuff on, uh, gun control, but what about taking out policies that are ineffective? Would you be willing to do that? Like, specifically, the California handgun roster, assault weapons bans as well. Uh, the assault weapons ban from 1994 to 2004 had no effect on gun violence whatsoever. The assault weapons ban in California has not had any effect at all. There was, it, they either used illegal weapons or they used handguns. It doesn't affect anything. But more specifically, the California handgun roster, it does nothing.
With some of those based with the concept of looking at the efficacy of existing policy and ensuring that we are, uh, you know, enforcing the laws that we have on the books, that we're evaluating the laws that we have on the books, whether it's this or anything else, and, um, you know, streamlining our regulations, again, whether it's here or anything else, yes, I'm absolutely supportive of that approach. Um, actually, I want to, I want to ask one question to the panel that's somewhat related, which is, you know, every year, there's conversations about, you know, new laws and new rules. Do you think, I guess, you know, particularly when I think about California, because California does have some of the toughest gun safety laws in the nation. When you look at California, do you think we need some additional laws, or do you think we need better enforcement of our existing laws? Or is there some combination?
Uh, I think we need better enforcement of our laws. There are a lot of times where we have laws in set, but just the enforcement mechanism still leads to people having, uh, holding illegal weapons, which they should not be holding. But to go off more on that point, California is leading the nation with the most gun safety laws. You can call them gun regulation laws, I call them gun safety. Because if you look at the statistics, the, excuse me, the statistics of it, gun violence in California is significantly lower compared to most other states, uh, in the entire country. Now, I'm not saying that there are still, there's no gun violence in California, there sadly is, there's gun violence across the entire nation. But I think a step is to making sure that the guns are in the right hands of the people. And I, I just wanted to go off, uh, the point that was made earlier about the policemen, um, and also the crime. Although crime may be going down, uh, violence in America is still more lethal. Meaning, in America, if you are caught between combat, or excuse me, uh, caught between violence, you're more likely to get killed mainly because people still have access to assault weapons. And when I say people who have access to assault weapons, I'm meaning the people that should not even be having those in the first place. So making sure that we get to a point where we're ensuring that those guns are in the right hands and not in the wrong ones is a step forward.
Okay, I'd just like to address a little bit that, you know, so much emphasis has been put on assault weapons, removing them, getting them out the hands of, of people. But if we could today get rid of all the assault weapons, just take them off the street, they're gone, it might impact the homicide rate by 3% or so, which, that, that's a lot of bodies. However, however, it's, it's not going to happen. And here's the, here's the problem with that, and what this gentleman is speaking to, and I kind of respect what he's saying, is that we have these weird laws where we're telling people, you know, there's a legal muzzle flash and an illegal muzzle, uh, flash suppressor, that there's a legal magazine and an illegal one. So when you take, say, you make it illegal to possess a 30-round magazine instead of a five-round magazine, what's happening is, you're taking a whole bunch of law-abiding, legal citizens who are possessing weapons, you change the law, and now you move them into the category where they're now criminals. They've never done any crime in their life, they're not in a gang, they don't use drugs, but they're now a criminal. And you expect law enforcement to do something about it. Do, we already have sheriffs saying then they're, they're not going to enforce the new laws, that they oppose them, they think they're unconstitutional, and they're not going to oppose them. We have to have rational laws, uh, that we can enforce, that we, the, the solution to this problem is not going to be, uh, incarcerating more people. The solution is going to be changing the culture, the society, and, and, uh, ending some of the attraction to violence and the pursuit of violence a, as part of our society.
37 people were killed with rifles in the state of California in 2017.
Let me, Dr., Dr.
But it's still.
You said that if we took out the cities that the crimes would be used, New Zealand in particular, that we would be the same as other countries, that's what you said. There were 39.
Let me restate what I said.
I want you to restate.
Of course not, you don't want me to get the information out there accurately.
I want to say accurately what you said.
Okay.
Okay.
You're not saying accurately what I said, you've already started, uh, mischaracterizing what I said, but go ahead.
Do you want to restate what you said?
No, I said, if we can, if we can get the, like, the top 10 worst cities, the homicide rate in this country approaches that of Europe. Our average right now is 4.1, 4.1 homicides per 100,000.
There were 39, uh, gun deaths in New Zealand.
I think I said Europe, didn't I? The, the, the average rate in Europe is 2.1.
Let's bring it back to the panel. All right, Dr. Nak, Dr.
When it's your turn, it's your turn, please, thank you.
So, did you say that to him when he said it on his?
I don't care.
Relax.
Thank you, committee. Yes. Breathe.
Can I?
Listen to Dr. Nak's perspective.
I just want to say, go back to, um, the question you asked was about what one thing can be done. Um, I would say the one thing that can be done can be about changing the culture. Um, the popular culture, we changed it about, for example, calorie counting, we're changing the culture about the portions of food size, we're changing the popular culture, we have changed popular culture about smoking. You don't smoke in restaurants anymore, you don't smoke in a place like this anymore. How did that happen? You can create all the laws that you want, when, uh, what's that rapper called, Snoop Dogg, when he comes and says it's cool to go to school? And things happen, people make a difference, right? So that kind of thing needs to be married to all these laws that we have, and only then I think we can see a difference in the culture that I think we're all debating on. I don't have anything more.
Additionally, I really do think, um, you know, one of the questions was, what should we do about current laws, and what about just enforcing the current laws? The current laws need to be enforced, there, we have a lot of good laws currently on the books in California. One, that Moms to Men Action and other works worked on, um, have, coming into law last year, was one that just forced people who, required people who wanted to have a concealed carry weapon, have proof that they've been able to fire a weapon ever in their lives, eight hours of training, was the simple statewide recommendation that we, um, that just became a law last year. And so having sheriffs who are like, well, I don't like the law, I'm not going to enforce it, isn't really their job. It's not their job to decide whether they like the law and they're going to enforce it, it's their job to do it. Um, but these other, these other things that will change, having the United States become a safer country, is firstly, maybe not yelling at each other all the time, um, but then also just paying attention to real numbers. The average deaths last year in the United States, there are 36,383. 22,000 are suicides, 12, 13 are homicides, 500 are unintentional deaths, and that's people not being commons, common sense gun owners. If you own a gun, it is your responsibility to keep your gun locked and loaded and safe. There are so many children who die each day because their gun, their parent is like, oh, well, you know, my kid's never going to reach that level of that shelf and find that gun. And you're all kids, right? You have found your birthday presents in the closet, you've found your holiday gifts, like, kids are curious, mine's eight now, she'll, she can figure anything out. So, having a, having a law that would be useful there is holding parents accountable. If your, there are states where if a child shoots himself, his parent, his friend, because he accidentally found a gun, it's not an accident, it's unintentional. And there are states where it's like, oh, well, you know, we're not going to press charges against the parent, that happened, sorry, your neighbor's kid is dead. Like, these are simple laws that should be common sense to pass, and I see people who are from both the opposite sides of yelling, nodding your heads out there, so it's going to be okay.
Can I just say that, um, along with this gentleman here, I was dumbfounded when I found out that after Sandy Hook, Obama, uh, President, President Obama, uh, assigned into a law, legislation to have CDC investigate, um, uh, violence to see what could be done, societally, what we could do about violence. I thought that was brilliant. The, the fact that somebody came in and, and, uh, got a law saying that we couldn't spend any money on that and unfunded it, as a police officer, I think that's just absolutely absurd, that absurd. That's one thing we should be looking at. What are the things in this society that we can tweak that, that are going to stop this gun violence and not make it worse? And, uh, again, just like the doctor said, that it's going to be cultural changes that are going to fix this, uh, I think that we have to stop engaging in violence.
All right, I'm going to take, I'm going to take a few questions that are written on that piece of paper. We're going to try this.
Well, I'll go real fast. Well, first of all, I don't need to, okay, well, anyway, I, I, can I just go real fast? Because the, something missing from the gen, our police officer and our doctor, no one's mentioned drugs in all of this. And when I think of crime spikes in my lifetime, I think of all the cocaine in the 70s.
Yeah, I think there's absolutely no doubt that the, the giant spike we saw in this.
Someone actually, someone else had a similar question that they wrote in.
Yeah, I wrote it. But from the two gentlemen at the end, I'd really love to hear where the drugs, the mental health, I mean, no one's mentioned it, and it causes gun violence.
The question is, what role, um, do we think that drugs, the?
I could kind of speak to that, because I saw, I mean, I was there in, in the 90s, that there's clearly no doubt that some of the highest levels of violence were a combination of crack cocaine and guns. Um, and yet, that has dropped off substantially, that is not the same problem that, that it once was. Our, uh, I would also note, though, that I think that, and I'm probably an outlier in law enforcement, this, I think, uh, from a public policy perspective, in terms of effective social policy, the criminalization of drugs, as we have it in this country, has been an abject failure. It's caused more problems than it's resolved. And, and it's created the violence, it's created a black market for drugs, um, it's created, it's undermined entire countries, caused them to be failed states, and we've gone about it wrong. We didn't treat addiction, we treated the criminality, the black marketering of, of narcotics. I think it was a colossal mistake, and I think there's examples of places that are doing a lot better than, than we've done. And we're actually starting to come around to it, we're starting to legalize some aspects of it, we're decriminalizing, we're taking people out of prison who have drug charges. Um, and I spent a long time in that business, major narcotics, international drug trafficking, abject failure, achieved nothing. There was never a day when somebody couldn't go out and buy a 20 of, uh, coke on the streets of Costa Mesa. And, uh, and I don't think much has changed in that respect.
So I'll take a little different approach to that. Um, I'll tell you that things like diabetes, blood pressure, cholesterol, they come together. Not always, but most of the times. And that's how I look at your question as well. Um, yes, you treat them, each of them, or all the, all of them together, but how do you prevent that? You change the culture. And how do you change the culture, all the stuff that I said before? It needs to be made cool not to own a gun. It needs to be made cool not to use drugs. It's not a coincidence that if you are, as I look from here, I don't assume a lot of people here, this is a college community, coastal community, so you're talking about how aware of your health you are. Most people in this probably are very aware. And that health literacy is, can be equated to gun literacy, if I may use that word, or drug literacy. I don't know, what can be done again, but that culture needs to be changed.
And fortunately, there is also legislation, and I met with our Assemblywoman in Sacramento just a couple of weeks ago, to talk about a California Violence Intervention and Prevention Program. And that is a grant program that we already have as part of the budget in California, that last year was funded at $9 million. Through that grant, cities and community organizations can apply to, um, have funded programs that help to reduce violence, help to support, you know, families to get out of a violent situation where they're more likely to follow into a gang style of a lifestyle. Um, last year, 120 cities and organizations applied for that grant, and there was only enough money for 16 of them to be funded. Um, in 2010, when Operation Peacemaker was, um, and went into effect, which is one of the programs, homicide fell by 56% in five years. So these are really, really effective programs, and what Moms to Men Action was in Sacramento lobbying for was to ask for the funding for those programs to be increased to $39 million in the budget this year. In the fifth biggest economy in the world, it seems that $30 million, or $39 million is a worthwhile investment into preventing the cost that, as you know, will have to fall on the taxpayers when it comes to medical bills, incarceration, law enforcement, and the judicial system.
Thank you, yeah, thanks for mentioning that, Elena. Are there anything, anything else, uh, that you guys have, have noticed in terms of California and pending legislation that you're watching, or that you're excited about? Anything else that you all have noticed?
Uh, definitely, for sure, I think, one, kind of unrelated from gun, uh, laws, there's A B 177, which should basically make Election Day a holiday, which is definitely something March for Life is still pushing for. This would, A B 177, yeah, this would make Election Day a holiday. So this would reduce the means of barriers that most people traditionally could have, so that they can go out. so that they can go out and vote for candidates who are pushing for common sense gun legislation, pushing for environmental laws, pushing for more regulations to make sure that income inequality also decreases in the country. Another one, which is gun related, would be AB 61, which is the Emergency Risk Protection Orders. We, we currently, sorry, yeah, we currently have, with our Emergency Risk Protection Orders, the only people that can actually go to a judge to grant a petition of restraining order on someone's firearm is only, are only immediate family members who have known the person for the last six months. This would basically expand it to being mental health physicians, doctors, teachers, people in the workplace, as long as you've known the person for the last six months. This way, it can make it easier for people, or, excuse me, it would make it better and make sure that the guns are in the right hands. So that anybody who may need the mental health that they deserve, they can at least get that. And this is what AB 61 will do.
And in addition, in connection to AB 61, there's AB 165. That's legislation to establish and require training to be developed for law enforcement officers regarding gun violence restraining orders. The gun violence restraining order, as you mentioned, it is a, it is already a thing. It became a thing after the mass shooting at, in Isla Vista, UC Santa Barbara, where I went to college. That family had called the police and said, my son sounds like he's, they're a danger. I know he has guns. I know that he's posting these videos and he's saying all of these things. Can you go check on him? And all they could do was walk up to the door, say, hey, how you doing? He said, I'm all right. And they couldn't go in. And if they had gone in, they'd have found so much as far as weapons go. So having a gun violence restraining order is a law that came into action after that. And if we could have the police officers all know about it and know how to enforce it, and also as Moms Demand Action, and you guys have a Speak for Safety organization that helps to have people know that that's a thing, so that Katie Porter, our Congresswoman, doesn't have to say that when she called, nobody knew what to do. Like, the law and law needs to know how to help the people, and that's a simple bill to pass.
At a national level, just to fill you in a little bit, HR 8 and HR 1112 in the House of Representatives has passed, and both of them have gone on to the Senate. Brady campaign has, Brady, Brady has been working hard to shepherd those through. And HR 8 is a bipartisan background check act of 2019, and HR 1112 is the enhanced background check of 2019. And they, they've both gone off to Senate, a Senate Bill 42, and right now, they're still in, in working on that one.
And so, and then I'll just add on, in terms of piece of legislation that I'm both watching and I co-author on, it's AB 340, just authored by one of my colleagues, Jackie Irwin. It's focused on the Armed Prohibited Persons Program, which you may be familiar with.
Which, which was...
The Armed Prohibited Persons Program. So this was a, you know, bipartisan effort years and years ago to establish essentially a list of people who should not have guns because they're either convicted felons or, you know, severe mental issues. There's a backlog after spending, what is it, $60 million on the enforcement of this program, there's still a backlog of over 10,000 people on this list. So that, to me, is like, you know, priority number one. Like, we need to make sure that those people do not have guns.
Could I make a point on that? Is one of the key entities in enforcing those was, was the Bureau of Investigations, California Department of Justice Bureau of Investigations and Bureau of Narcotics Enforcement. They have been decimated. They are some of the lowest paid law enforcement in the state. They're now, their numbers are probably one-fifth of what they were back in the nineties and early 2000. And that's, they're the people who can follow up on all the criminals that are linked in some way to a weapon, where they can go out and just proactively go after the criminal residing in your community that shouldn't have weapons that has it. I worked with those teams back in the nineties, and they're so understaffed, I don't believe they're able to do it anymore.
So it's actually, this particular bill, the proposal for this particular bill, is actually going to be a pilot program to have some county, you know, sheriff's departments partnering with the DOJ to actually make this happen. Because we've done that in a couple of localities and have found it to be effective, so we're going to try to expand that. Okay. I think there was one more question from, that I'll take.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting me share my opinion today. My name's Ben, and I'm a college student at Orange Coast College. I think this is something that doesn't get talked about enough. As a student on campus, we are a major threat for mass shootings. No one is armed on campus. And we are told that the best thing that we can do in response is hide behind our desks and shut the doors. I don't believe that that's an appropriate response for someone that comes on campus with a firearm. And I believe that students have the right to shoot back, and not only that, but to defend themselves. As a legal gun owner and student, I realize that the only way to dearm evil people is to arm good people with firearms. So my question is, how come on campus, campus safety is not allowed to have firearms if they are vetted? And in response to that, what would your guys' opinion be on this issue?
Yeah. If I could add to that, I think the good guys with the firearms should be the law enforcement, making sure that the law enforcement have the right capabilities to ensuring that our schools are safe. Another thing, and this is a bill that's going through here, what students have is, they tend at such a young age, have mental health issues. And obviously, if you have mental health issues and you have access to a firearm, that could lead to disaster. SB 660 would require that, and mandate that each college, specifically, community colleges too, there would be one mental health counselor for every 1,500 students. Me personally, I believe there should be one counselor for each student. That is what I truly believe in. That would be nice.
I don't have a solution. I just wanted to say I'm sorry about the fact that you, as a student, have to agonize about your safety in a college, and that means that our representative needs to do some work.
I was a high school teacher, and I had wonderful students, but I have to say, the last thing I would ever want as a teacher, because this is a possible, this is also a thing that people hope for, is for teachers to be armed, because...
But that's the first thing you want with students.
But that's the other problem. So the reason that people shouldn't, the good guys with the guns should be the people who are in law enforcement, is that when the law enforcement comes on to look for who the mass shooter is, and all these kids with guns are trying to stop everybody, it's hard to, they won't be able to tell who, this is a real problem. I mean, they really won't know who they are trying to defend, the real shooter.
They're in the Florida shooting, there's an officer at the school, less than a minute after the shooting started, and he didn't do anything. You can't depend on...
So I think, yeah, thank you for sharing that perspective. I do think, you know, there is, there is certainly not just in this room, but in the country, I think there is a divide between, I think philosophically, between people who think, okay, the only way to address gun violence is, you know, kind of this never-ending arms race, versus I think some of us who really genuinely do believe that the way to address gun violence is less guns. And I think, you know, when I look at what happened in Australia, so how many years ago was that? That was, what, 30, 20 years ago? 20 years ago, there was a mass shooting in Australia. Within a matter of, I think, weeks, this, they instituted a gun buyback program. There has not been a single mass shooting in Australia in the last 20 years.
I think our biggest thing here, we're all trying to get the same thing. Nobody likes people dying. Nobody wants to see them die. All right? We, we're all trying to figure out different ways to go about it. I think the best way to go about it is, it's not normal to go into a school and shoot 10, 20 people. It's a mental health problem. It's at the core of this. It's not normal to go on your block and go shoot some rival gang member. This is a mental health problem.
And I think, but I do think that that's a, you know, that is a good and fair point, which is, I think for a number of our biggest challenges that we're facing as a state and as a country, you know, underpinning that, whether you're talking about gun violence or you're talking about homelessness, or you're talking about, you know, so many of our other, you know, drug addiction, mental health is underpinning that. And I, I know that that is a priority of mine, that's a priority, I know of some of the other elected officials that are in the room today, and it's a priority for, for go introduce them. He appointed Daryl Steinberg as the mayor of Sacramento as his, you know, for mental health czar to, to address that, because it is something that's been underinvested in, and as a community and as a state, it's, it's caused lasting damage, absolutely.
And that being true...
We're going to kind of bring it to a close. So what we'll do, I mean, I'd like everyone to, you know, if you want to stick around and talk to our panelists after, that's great. Thank you for participating and for your, your enthusiastic engagement. And I would just like to give each of our panelists a chance, before we wrap up, just, you know, sort of some closing thoughts, and give us your perspective on, you know, where do we go from here? Like, what can this room of people, what can normal, everyday folks do to make sure that gun violence in America, you know, isn't something that we're still, still talking about in 24 years?
I'll go back quickly to say what I said before. Number one, think what you can give or compromise on, because there's a lot of back and forth over here. What can you compromise on to build that momentum? I can tell you many examples. Sudafed, brain defect babies, we fortified cereal, tons of those. So people have come together. What can you do to come together with the other side? There's another side. And two, popularize this notion, whichever we come together on, that needs to be popularized, whichever way it's possible. That's all. Thank you.
I think all of the groups that talk about learning how to prevent gun violence realize that there's a Second Amendment, that the people in this country have the right to guns. The problem is, how do we can, how do we control the people, the bad guys? And I don't know, I don't know what the easy answer is to that. But I think we all need to work together towards that goal. Nobody wants to take everybody's gun away. But on the other hand, we can't have our school campuses as armed fortresses. I don't have an easy answer for it, but I think all working together and realizing that everybody has a point of view, and, and somehow we have to make gun violence not okay in this country.
If you think about it, we're one day short of the five-month anniversary of the November 5th election. Cottie was elected. She and the, in the time, she's now been sworn in, that took time, and here we are in less than five months from the election, having this conversation. There aren't any obvious answers. Leslie and I, in the last election, we knocked on 2,500 doors, talked to 1,200 people. One out of 1,200 people had guns as their number one issue. And that was also a trade-off with abortion. But what you can do is, you can support bills, let your legislators know what, what you're in favor of, what you support, and during the campaigns, get out and support the candidates that agree with your opinions. Support Cottie.
Okay. So there is a lot of issues that intersect with gun violence. There are a lot of things that you have to talk about and address before you can really effectively address gun violence, like, you know, mental health, resources for low-income communities, and so on and so forth. And so I think that one thing that people can tangibly do while we work on legislation and changing the culture, is really look at mental health, look at these other issues that we're working on, because you can't have, you can't solve, you can't have gun reform without having, without addressing mental health and domestic violence. And so just be aware that these are other things that are going on, so we can effectively do this.
I think, I'm, in a very polarized country that we are in now, we tend to just look at each other and scream and scream and say, oh, why aren't you supporting this? And in the last election cycle, I ran for the City Council of Mission Viejo, and quote, this is the city council. And I knocked on someone's door, and they asked me what my stance was on gun legislation for the city council. It kind of shows how gun laws are so passionate to so many people. And what I can say to this is, mass shootings make up about 2% of gun violence in America. That is something that, 1%, 0.1, doesn't matter, it's a big deal. But 60% makes up suicide and gun violence. So this is definitely a mental health issue. That's why supporting candidates who are for mental health in terms of gun legislation to making sure that we reduce gun violence is definitely something that we need to be pushing for, and making sure that we respect the other side. We may have differences to start, especially now, but it's been nearly five months since the election in November, and from what I can recall, from however many years I've been living, you know, the 19, 18 years I've been living, we've never had a discussion of gun laws. And now we are. And we will get to that point.
So, so definitely the mental health aspect of it. Guns more successful, three times more successful if you have access to a gun. And suicide is so much more prevalent and routine of a problem than a mass shooting. But since we can't, we've spent a lot of time in talking about, like, how can we stop the bad guy with a gun? But talk to yourself, what can you do yourself as a person to protect your family? One of the things that Moms Demand Action taught me and that I've been doing, and was really hard at first, and now it's not, is when I take my child to somebody else's house or somebody asks for a playdate, I say, or invite somebody over, I say, well, she doesn't have any allergies, we have a dog, the dog is friendly, we have, but if you're allergic, I can keep her in another room, we have a pool, but it has a fence, and we don't have any guns in our home. Now, my daughter wants to go to your house, and I ask, you know, those questions are asked, do you have any guns in your house? And if so, are they locked and kept with unloaded, locked, with the ammunition locked away from it? And if the answer is, well, no, it's hidden in the drawer, then I know statistically there's a good chance my child is going to be killed or kill somebody accidentally. So I say, oh, well, you know, here's what I, can we have the playdate at my house? Can your kid come play at my house? Because I don't feel safe having my child in a house that has a gun that's not locked. So it's simple, day-to-day things that you can do in your own life to keep yourself safe, and to ask the people you know who own guns, how do you store them? Even if you don't have a kid you're going to send over there, just how do you store them?
I've been doing this for a little while, and I have yet to meet anybody who wants more gun violence, more, this is not about, you know, regulating and taking the guns, you know, it's about reducing violence, reducing unintentional shootings, you know. No one should be worried or afraid in their classroom, in the movie theater, anywhere. And like you said, this is not a simple answer. Mental illness plays a huge part. And if you're looking at, like the homelessness problem, mental issues have a huge part of that. These are overlying, they're combined. And so, again, not easy answers, but everybody in here, I think, wants their family to be safe, and they want to be safe. So there are ways to work that together. Thanks.
I would just say that strong families will prevent violence. I mean, strong families with mothers and fathers there in the home, taking care of kids, raising kids, will keep kids from getting involved in criminal activity, number one. Number two, good mental health treatment across the board, that we go to that. And then, we have to somehow end this love affair that we have in our culture with violence, gun violence. The hero that solves all the problems with the gun, we glorify him. We need to stop, we, we need to get past that. It's over. It's, it's ugly, and there's so much better going on out there. That's what we need to embrace.
Thanks to all of you, once again, for being here, for sharing your perspective and your insights. Really appreciate it. I would also like to, before we go, just thank a couple of our elected officials who've joined us today. Mayor Katrina Foley, thank you. Is Dr., is Dr. Prinsky here from the Board of Trustees, or did she have to step out? Mary Hornbuckle, trustee?
She had to step out.
She had to step out. All right, well, thank you, Mayor Foley, for standing. And I also want to say thank you to Calvin, are you here? Calvin? So, okay, Calvin is an intern on my team and a student here at OCC, and he was incredibly instrumental in pulling this forum together. So thank you, Calvin. I appreciate you. I think, you know, my last, my last reflection is, the status quo is clearly not working, right? When, when you're scared to come to school, because you're afraid that someone could be here with a gun and shoot you, something isn't working. When we have active shooter draws of elementary school kids all across this country, something's not working. When we have tragedy after tragedy and life after life lost, and our, you know, politicians can only offer thoughts and prayers, something's not working. We need real policy solutions that, that I believe, policy solutions that reflect the will of the people. We need politicians who... We need politicians who are willing to engage, I think, on this subject authentically, courageously, and with all sides. And we need people like everybody in this room to keep raising your voices, to keep calling your elected officials, and to keep fighting for progress. So, thank you. Lastly, to each and every one of you for joining us, for being here, and for sharing your perspective. And I think we'll all stick around for a little while if we want to have a more intimate conversation. Thank you.